Dean of the Nelsonville Planning Commission to order on October 13th, 2020. Present are Betty Jo Parsley, Anthony Davis, and Sarah McMillan. We all serve on the planning commission. Absent tonight is Fred Holmes. He is in Louisiana. And also in attendance are our city code enforcement officer Becky Barber and city council vice president Dan Sherman. Approval of the agenda is the first item of business.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right. And the second is approval of our minutes from our August/September meeting that we held. Last week we were scheduled to meet, but due to conflicts we had to delay, and our city code enforcement officer was quite ill and not able to present to us what she will be presenting this evening.
I'll make a motion for a brief.
And I'll second. Do we have any announcements from any one of three of us? Or anyone in the audience? Do you have an announcement or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We don't have anybody here this evening for public comment that is here at this time. Should that occur, then we would go back to that after we've finished our other business. So we will start with the old business, and Becky will address that. And it's reviewing of the schedule of fees and a discussion ongoing forward with a proposal. The fees haven't been updated for how long of a period of time, Becky, did you think?
Um, I think the last, I think it's been over 10 years since our fee schedule has been looked at and reviewed and changed.
Okay.
So it's been over 10 years.
All right, well, then it definitely is something we need to address. So I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Um, so I think if we could look at this Excel document that I provided you.
So sorry.
That's okay. And what Becky was able to provide us was a summary of fees that had been collected for 2019 and 2020 year-to-date. And in 2019, that number was just over $20,000. The majority, $19,770, was rental permits. And then so far year-to-date in 2020, again, that's $13,410, and the majority of that was again rental permits, with a second, the second highest line item at $350 was zoning permits. And what, you know, as I was researching this, what was very obvious to me is that the website is not very user-friendly in terms of what are we looking to charge fees for? What are the amounts of those fees? How does a city resident who wants to file for one of these, you know, where do they go, what do they do? I looked at a lot of other websites from, you know, small, teeny-tiny village municipalities to much larger organizations. And I think even the very basic, like they have a Word document that you can access to schedule or to file for one of these. But ours, it just, it's kind of buried. So I think that's the first thing that we could do is do a better job of communicating what do we charge for? What is that amount? And how do citizens apply for those? And that was just what I found through my research. And then to your point, Becky, we don't do a very good job of applying these when needed, but I think maybe that's largely in part due to the fact that we don't do a good job of communicating them.
Right. I think that's, I've found that in my job the last two years, that's been the biggest issue with code is communication and education. I get a lot of people that tell me, "I didn't know. I didn't know that happened." And of course, we want compliance, right? I mean, that's what we want, compliance. Code enforcement is all about getting 100% compliance if possible. And if folks aren't aware of what they need to do, then it's my job to educate them. So that's a very good idea. Did you find any particular city that you thought looked really nice and was user-friendly?
Um, I did, but I don't remember them off the top of my head.
Can you email that to me? Because that's an easy solution. I can send that information over to our guy, our tech guy. He can get it put on our internet or our city webpage. Pretty easy. It may take him a week, but we can get that taken care of.
And the ones that I thought were the best were the ones where not only did it have, you know, a very clear area, like this is the fee area. This is how much it costs. This is the document that you fill out. And this is the part of the code that it references back to, you know, explain, like, you know, this is the 9.18.01 kind of thing. Like, this is where you find all the information in the code. I thought, for me, like, that made the most amount of sense because it references back to that specific section in the code where it talks about what it is. And then it just very clearly says, like, if you want rental code, you know, registration, this is where you go. And this is, you know, I don't know. To me, that was, it was just kind of keep it some whole stupid sort of logic, which I appreciate.
We can't expect them to comply and do the things if we aren't giving them the right information to be able to accomplish that. So that's probably very vital to this. I just have one question. In the rental permits from 2019, I'm assuming that's for the full year, the $19,700?
No. So what happens is I sent out the letters in October. People, folks have from October. This year I started in September. I started sending out letters. So it gave them, because I know COVID's been an issue for a lot of people, so it gave them enough time to know, hey, this is when it's due. It's due February 1st. If you don't pay it by February 1st, it's a $100 late charge per rental unit. So the 2019 fees, that could be 2018, and it could be 2019 fees. And 2020, it could be 2019 fees and 2020 fees. So, because folks have from October to February, so it goes into the following year. And that's how they keep track on.
Well, there's such a differential with the $19,770 versus the $12,810, but that explanation explains that, you know, you haven't reached the deadline for when payment is due.
I think we've maybe received for the 2021 so far, maybe 30 rentals. That number for 2020 may become higher than $19,000 this year, depending upon if the folks get their rental permits in by December 31st. And then it'll carry over to 2021.
So those people do comply and pay this?
Um, that is correct. We had probably 10 individuals that we had to send a letter to that we were going to take them to civil, we're going to create a civil matter and take them to court, municipal court. Gary was going to just take a whole group of them down that didn't pay their rental registration and do a case.
So we had 10 delinquent?
We did. And by the time they got the second letter, I think we've got two individuals that are delinquent that we're going to have to take to court. So it's pretty good. And that's only the folks that I'm aware that's renting in the city. And we put that out there yearly on the webpage. We do a press release letting folks know that your rental registrations are coming due. So it's out there now.
Remind me what the amount of money per unit is?
30.
Okay.
And so that's another thing, you know, that as I was looking at these, and I know you have discussed this in the past, that it's $30. It's $30 whether you have a rental that has one bedroom, like a one, one single-bedroom unit, or it's $30 if you have a boarding house that has 10 bedrooms, correct? And so that was, for me, I felt like maybe that was kind of the low-hanging fruit for us in terms of, you know, going forward as a proposal, maybe looking at making that a little bit more uniform in terms of maybe it's a different fee for boarding houses up to 10 bedrooms or units with 100 bedrooms or, you know, I don't, I don't know. But maybe we could define some parameters in terms of like 0 to 5 bedrooms or 5 to 20 bedrooms. Because I think that there is some room there that would make a little bit more sense. And then that way, you're not saying to the landlords, it's $30 this year and it's $50 next year. I mean, that's a heck of a jump. But maybe it makes more sense to say, it's again, it's $30 next year, but if you have a 10-bedroom boarding house, then it's, I don't know, $100. I mean, maybe that makes more sense. And I don't know what you guys think about that.
To me, I would think a boarding house would be per room. The fee would be based on, because typically you have multiple people in a room, I think. So if you had two people in one room, that should be one fee, I would think. But, I mean, just for instance, people that have duplex houses, they're paying two fees. I mean, there are two units, they're both paying fees, so.
We only have one, if you call it a boarding house, in the city. And that is.
How many bedrooms is that one?
Help me think of the name of it. Do you remember the name of the?
Sycamore or something.
Yeah, Sycamore and Summit. That's the only, pretty much, boarding house. Now, I'm not sure if that belongs to Hawking College, like it's.
It's privately owned.
Well, I know it's privately owned, but I don't know, he, I haven't talked to Mr. Larue. I don't know if he rents it out to Hawking and then Hawking pays or the kids pay Hawking. It's kind of like a dorm. I'm not sure how it all works. I think that would be a good conversation to have with Bill Larue, to talk to him about it before. Because otherwise, it wouldn't do any good to do that because it's only going to affect one person.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. I guess I was thinking there were more of like 5-bedroom to 10-bedroom kind of.
So I've seen a couple of places that were like a house that's been turned into either a triplex or blended even up into 5-bedrooms. Those people are paying outrageous prices for these places. You know, $600. So if they're charging, you know, rooms like that, then they should pay the $30 fee because, you know, they're collecting a lot of money.
Yeah.
For very little space.
Is it the place that I'm thinking of that you're thinking of?
So the triplex, yeah, the triplex.
Okay. Yeah, he's paying $90 for the building.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, so if you got somebody that's got a triplex, like, and I know other places that are renting out bedrooms that they're getting charged because they're stuck. They're stuck in this system where they've paid a lot of money and they can't afford to move because they have to take basically most of their money paying the rent for that, the place that they're living, so.
Trying to survive.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a big nasty thing. But if the landlords are taking advantage of that, then, you know, they should pay the fee.
It doesn't make sense that if you had, like, just as an example, the two dorms that are here, that all they pay is $30 per building when they have all of that occupancy? I mean, I just.
Yeah.
And what do they charge per room for rent? You know what I'm saying? So I think you got to base it off of, if you're charging a certain amount, then you should be paying.
I think what Athens does is if you have over 10 bedrooms, it's a set fee.
Yeah, and I have that here.
Like $150. Instead of $30 a bedroom, it's like a set price. It's something over 10 beds or what, 10 beds.
Per unit owner occupied, unit keeping renters, up to 10 units, one building, $150.
Yeah.
Per unit, over 10 units in one building, it's 75. Per unit, over 10 units in more than one building, at one location, 100. Per bedroom for rooming house, $40. Per housekeeping unit or owner occupied unit keeping renters, 100. And then fees, like late fees and.
So one of the things that we need to look at is we need to see if Bill Larue is actually leasing it out to the college and the college is taking care of the rent.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we should.
Think about the amount.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't, I would hate to use that as an example because I feel like that is sort of an anomaly. Whereas what Dan brought up probably is more widespread, more of like you have a unit with 10 bedrooms, you know, and you have people that you're renting out to. But I don't know, I mean.
That's unlawful. If that happens in the city, they're going against the zoning code. So no one's going to say, hey, I got a, I got a house. I need to register my 10 bedrooms because I'm renting it out to 10 individual people. Because then at that point, it's unlawful. They're not going to admit that to me. And I'm going to say, you can't.
So then the duplex, triplex situation is taken care of as a separate rental fee? Yeah, that's already done.
How many people were in that house on Elizabeth Street that burned?
Well.
Because didn't several families get this place next to the house?
So I also am a Red Cross volunteer, and then I do the disaster service volunteer work for the city. And I came in and there was, there was actually, it's not, they're not really families, but it was like grandma, cousin, son, brother, and brother's girlfriend, stuff like that. So one of the things that I talked to Gary about is how do we define a family unit? The whole family unit stuff in our city code says three unrelated individuals, right? Well, there's been a lot of people that are complaining because families could be grandma, grandpa, you know, grandma, grandpa's son and their kids, and that's their family unit. And it would be very difficult as the code officer to distinguish if that's not or if that is a family unit because they're all related. How do we, how do we do the three unrelated individuals? And then we're looking at also people that are grandfathered in. So we've got some houses before the zoning code took effect.
Wow.
That are actually, and it's never had any kind of remodeling. They've never applied for zoning to add rooms on. They've never been in trouble with code enforcement creating any kind of code enforcement violations. And those individuals are now grandfathered, they were grandfathered in before I even got here. It was way before my predecessor, I believe. I don't know. Anyway, those, we have to look at all of these pieces. It's like going to a house and they have a gravel driveway. Well, if that gravel driveway existed before zoning code went into effect and they've done no structural change, so they haven't added to the square footage, then there's nothing I can do about that gravel driveway because it's grandfathered in. Does that make sense?
It does, so.
So we have to watch that we're not stepping on people's toes and violating their rights because they.
Right, which obviously, I mean, we wouldn't. So it sounds like, though, there's a situation to deal with, the duplex, triplex situation would be like separate rental fees.
Yeah, those are taken care of in the city. Those are being taken care of now. But the board, you were talking about the boarding house situation.
Right.
But that's different.
Then I think what we would want to do, I mean, I think from our standpoint, maybe it makes sense then to, you know, you asked us to look at this and see if that makes sense, like, I mean, then maybe that doesn't make sense. Maybe it doesn't make sense to change that structure. Although just because it's currently not on the books, I would say maybe in the future, it is going to be on the books. So maybe we think about putting some sort of structure in place with rooms for future. But then I would also say is, you know, eventually these fees probably should go up. We, you know, pretty much just started doing this, but at some point, there has to be a schedule for fees to increase.
So Gary is rewriting the code this year. And he asked council if the fees, we wanted a section to where all the fees are in one section so that individuals can go to our fees.
Yeah.
And it's there. Or do you want it scattered out throughout the code? And here's the fee for this. Here's the fee for this. I'm not, I can't remember what council voted. I think it was changed and it was scattered throughout the code a few years ago. I think five years ago, he looks, he looks at the, all the codes and, sorry, I'm brain dead today, can't think of the name of the term. Anyway, he looks at them, looks at them every five years. And five years ago, they had them scattered. And I think council voted to have it all in one place.
Consolidate.
Fine, huh?
Consolidate.
Yeah, I mean, I think scattered makes sense, but then like a summary page where it's like, you know, these are your fees, and it's a hyperlink, and you can click on it and go to the specific section and.
Yeah. So I think that's happening this year. So that would be a good time if we wanted to add an additional fee or have council vote on adding an additional fee or have council vote on if the fees are going to be raised a percentage. One of the things that I favor is if we raise one fee, we need to raise them all because that's the only firm, fair, consistent way to do it. And they haven't been looked at and raised. So the zoning fee has been $50 since 1985. What, how much are other towns zoning fees?
Right. And that's what you'd asked us to look at.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was the way I approached it is.
Sure.
What we're charging fair.
Sure.
And is there a plan for moving forward? And that's what I thought we were supposed to be doing with this.
Right. Now, all the stuff that you have really good ideas, I can get that taken care of in no time. But, you know, it's the fee, and the fee structure is going to be taken care of when Gary completes the.
So then we didn't need to look at that.
No, we need, so what we need to look at is do we want to raise the fees since they haven't been raised since 19, in the 80s?
So you, you're a proponent of like just a unilateral, across-the-board, like a 5% rate on all fees kind of idea?
I mean, that's my thought. I, you know, I don't know what everyone else is thinking.
I did not research in that direction. Like, I don't know what other.
That's right. I couldn't find much.
Cities do year-over-year in terms of fees. So I would feel comfortable researching that specific idea a little bit more. Because I was just looking at like, you know, how could this maybe be organized a little bit better?
Right. And I think the webpage, the stuff that you did research on is a really good idea. But I did want to let you know that Gary is putting it all together in our city code by the end of the year. So that is taking place.
Does that have to go before council for approval, though?
Well, he's just.
What, he's just pre-arranging it.
Yeah, I don't think he's changing it now.
Yeah, he's taking out some of the stuff in the code. It's unlawful now that you can't, you know, you can't charge an individual or you can't, so he's taken out stuff like shooting a gun in the city because some stuff went to the Supreme Court, was ruled, you know. There's a few other things. We had a meeting about two months ago with Gary, and we went through everything that's, that we can no longer enforce.
Okay. How long have we had rental permit fees?
30 or 4 years.
I was going to say, it hasn't been in effect.
Well, we just raised it to 30 last year.
Okay, all right. That's why it was 25.
Yeah, it was 20 in 2000. I think it started out 20, maybe in 2013?
25?
It was supposed to be 25, wasn't it?
It was 20.
It was 20.
Okay.
And then it raised to 30 in 2019? 2019? And then I think Planning and Development, they're looking at business license, whether they should, the permit for business license, if they should pay every year. Because right now, it's one time. You can be a business owner and apply for a business permit, and you've only had to pay a fee in the last 20 years. So I know Planning is working on the Planning and Development.
Okay. So it's not an annual fee, it's just a.
Yeah. Some cities do biannual, and some cities do annual. And that's all the way across the country. I mean, anytime a business opens up, they would buy a yearly or bi-yearly occupational license. And they just have to renew it every year or every two years.
But we don't have that implementation. We just have ones, when you first open, you pay it, and then.
Yeah, and the businesses can be open for a couple of years and then just disappear, go out of business. And the city has no, really has no follow-up. And it was really important this year to know our businesses, like what are our businesses in town? If they register every year, at least we know who our businesses are in town. And we get a count of that, which is nice. Another thing is we have a handicap parking permit, and we don't charge a fee for that, not even administrative costs. We do all the administrative piece here in the building, and then the guy, the street guys go out and put the handicap signs out. So internally, we're looking at an application process because we've never even had an application process. So that's being worked on currently. And we want to put that in our software so that it's in the software forever so we know who's been, who's had a handicap parking throughout the city. And then when those expire, because some folks have a temporary handicap parking, some folks have permanent for the rest of their life, and some folks only have it maybe every three years or every five years they expire. So right now, currently, we have handicap parking signs out in the city. And we really don't know if those folks still have a placard, if they're still handicapped. So that's something that was brought to us that was never dealt with in the past, that we're looking at currently. And do we want to assess a administrative cost? $2.50?
That was the other thing that I saw on a lot of these, is that a lot of these websites have an administrative fee for each one of these.
And there should be because we put a lot of time into filling out these permits, tracking these permits.
Okay, so just to recap so that I am crystal clear, it was not that you wanted us to look at maybe making these more modern. It was more to look at if there is a schedule that increases fees by a certain percentage every year or two years as a group. And then also whether or not we feel that there should be an administrative fee. So that's what you would like for us to research?
I would. And then all the other stuff that we talked about earlier on, I can get taken care of once we figure out if we want to raise those fees or not and how we want to, if we want to start a schedule.
All right. I guess we need to wait until Fred is with us to where we could discuss.
Yeah, that's his baby.
Yes.
He did work on that. I can't find one.
I've got here, here's mine. No, honey, go ahead. He worked, he got online and did a lot trying to do what I would be applicable for here, for VR.
Yeah.
So Becky, if in fact there was a percentage fee to be implemented based upon the knowledge that you have about this, what, do you have a ballpark percentage that you would be thinking about?
I, no, I would, so I've looked at multiple towns. I contacted the city of Galpelus. I contacted Logan, Athens, Lancaster, Jackson County, Welston. So all the areas around us, I did contact them. What I couldn't find online, I contacted them just to see what their fees are set at. Some of their fees are at the same price. Some of them are extremely more. You know, another thing, Lancaster has a building department, so their fees are a lot higher for zoning than what our fees are. And then Athens is a little bit higher. Galpelus is a, probably, ours is 50. I think Galpelus was 75. They don't have a building department. So everyone was, it was all over the place. That's, that's why I brought it to you guys. I think that, I think it's fair that way and then you can give it to council.
Does it, from an administrative standpoint, does it cause the office any issues? If we were going to do, you know, theoretically like a three percent raise, then you're talking cents. Whereas before, it's been a nice whole number. Do most of your people come in and say, here's twenty, you know, here's thirty dollars in bills? Or do most people write a check? I mean, I'm just trying to think of like, does change cause an issue? Is it easier to look at whole numbers?
Most folks write a check or pay cash because we do not take a credit card. And that's something that we're also looking at. If the fees go up, we're hoping to put some of that fee money into I-Works so that individuals can go online and apply for their permits, pay for their permits. So that's something that I would like to see take place so that we're more in the twenty-first century. Where if you go online and you're researching this information, there's a link that you can click on. It'll take you over to the application. You can fill it out online, submit it, and pay it with your credit card online. So that way, they get it fairly quicker. I mean, we would still have to review zoning, floodway permit, FEMA permits, those kinds of things. But if someone wanted to do their rental registration, they would fill out the application and submit it online. Now, I will tell you that we do the TextMyGov and folks still want to call in and talk to a human and say, this is my complaint. I have a pothole on Chestnut Street. When they, all they can do, and they've got cell phones. I'm like, do you have a smartphone? Yes, this is what we'd like to see take place. So therefore, there's accountability, there's some transparency there. We know that you have text on this day through TextMyGov and here is a plain routing system. Here it is and it wasn't taken care of, why? I think we want some accountability. And so hopefully, if we do have that system online, the folks in Nelsonville and abroad will start using that to apply for permits.
Okay, so another thing to think about then are the credit card fees.
Yes.
You know, do you want to wrap, try to wrap that into whatever bump you're going to do at three percent? Or do you want to tell people if they're going to pay with a credit card and they're being charged with three percent? I mean, you know, there's, we've all been faced with those options before.
Right.
So that's another thing to consider.
So I have been talking to the city manager and the auditor. I think with those fees hidden in, you'll have less of an issue with individuals paying twenty, say thirty dollars for a rental permit and then you're going to tap two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Right.
So it'd be better if it was thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents, it's all in there.
Right.
And...
This might be difficult in a year when you're already doing a three percent increase on top of the three percent credit card, you know, fees.
Right.
And maybe something that's easier to stagger and give an option the first year. Just a thought, I don't know.
Yeah, it makes sense, I know what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, those are all ideas that you guys can talk, I mean, we can look at and research and see what other... I think it's really easy to just call another town, you know, ask of what, what, how are your fees changing year by year, every, you know? How are you doing it?
Yeah, yeah, from what I've seen, static fees, it can be kind of the norm. I mean, a lot of documents I found were, hadn't been changed since two thousand fifteen, two thousand nine. I mean, it, maybe not a good thing, but it's, I don't think that we're unique in this situation.
Okay.
Maybe the activity now that is also being implemented in the code enforcement office where, you know, before, we didn't have a code enforcement officer and so it was lacked. But now that you're there and you see the need for why the fee should be increased because of the amount of productivity that you're doing in order to implement all of these different things. I, when I see this, it makes me think that, because I don't know how it's done, but the scale. See, when you come to Nelsonville and are operating any type of construction work or anything like that that they're supposed to register, I know with the auditor's office and then you're sure to collect income tax from all of this. I just, I wondered, I thought, with all the things that have been going on, how they keep all that updated? You know, it just makes you think about how important it is. And would I-Works help with that too? Okay, I know that information is confidential, you know, and they're talking about that. But I just, we have such a huge amount of construction going on here, you can't help but think, you know.
Yeah, they would apply for contractor's registration through my office.
Okay.
Through code enforcement and zoning and then that's good for a year. And so then, once they do that, we send them down to the auditor's office to get on board with all the stuff that they need to do in the city. So we try to work as a team. If they go down to the auditor's office, they'll send them down to us and then we take care of the contractor's registration. You know, I just wanted to say that for me, I think accountability and transparency is the key to a lot, a lot of my success as a code officer. And I think creating accountability for everyone across the board, not only city management and city workers, but also the cities, the citizens so that, and education to get compliance. I think those are the two things that's been the most successful pieces of my job is accountability and education. And I think that, I love all the stuff that you researched and I think this is great. I, I think that if you want to do business in the city, you should pay if a local is doing business in the city, they pay. You know, I think it should be accountability for everyone across the board. And in, in order to do that, as one person in the zoning or code enforcement office, that's, that's pretty hard. So coming to you guys to figure out what do we need to do to bring this out? And then what do we need to do if we're going to make it easier for the individual? If they live in West Virginia and they want contractor's registration instead of sending it through the mail and getting the payment back and all of this? Let's do it online. And in order to do it online, we need to, those people that are doing it online, that's making it easy for them, they need to be able, the fees need to be assessed to them and they need to pay for that, you know, easy access.
I, you know, it makes me think that on our Nelsonville page, when we were talking, that perhaps somewhere or maybe with an attachment to it, that it would just simply say, if you are planning on, or if you are assigned to do work in the city of Nelsonville, click here and these are the following permits that you must obtain in order to do that and to contact code enforcement officer Becky. I'm sorry, your last name Barbara, my brain.
That's okay, my brain's the one that's...
My cheese line.
My brain is, oh my God. And, you know, and then it would just come up and say, these are the requirements
Sure, sure.
to do your...
That's what Sarah was saying, just have to code state it or cite it, summary. I think it's great stuff. I think all of that is great and I'm on board with getting that going with Ryan.
What about, I'm just curious, I mean, some of these things that have no charge? I mean, obviously, we've talked on the theme about make a property registration fee, but what about excavation permit fee or opening permit fee? Do you feel like those should have a charge assessed with them?
Absolutely.
So that's something else that we need to add to the list.
Absolutely. I think all the fees need to be assessed and need to be taken care of. I mean, in our city code, it says council at a later date will assign a fee and there's never been a fee assigned.
Well, it used to be if you cut into the curbing that you paid, I was always under the impression that it was a couple hundred dollars when you're cutting into our curbing and even if you as a private individual are doing it and then repairing your sidewalk in front of your home, you, and they get into the street and tear up, then if you put that all back the way it was originally, then you receive your permit fee back.
Well, so the problem with that was, it was five hundred dollars. So I know we paid it because we did the opera house and we had to tear the street. So, of course, we poured concrete back in there, but in fact, but five hundred dollars? Some people tear it up, fix your thing, go, it's cheaper for me to let you fix it, it's my money.
They've been talking about raising that for years.
I think we have. I thought we raised it to like a couple thousand dollars.
Are you talking about the street bond?
Yeah.
Oh, she's talking about a fee for a permit, to apply for a permit for her gun.
Well, so the bond, it's the same thing.
It's the same, it's the same thing.
So she's talking about the bond because...
Okay.
I just phrased it, I phrased it wrong.
Okay.
But we, and we don't have someone who goes around and, I mean, we don't have somebody who has time to go around and see what all's going everywhere. So we depend upon other people, the employees in the city, if they see something like that to report it. I, this is not appropriate to bring this up now, but I will talk to you about it later. I see the dirt coming down from Church Street across from McNerick's Corner and they've got pieces of fabric like this going all the way up and down the hill. And I looked at it the other day and I thought, gosh, if we have a monsoon from this hurricane or any of these or tropical storm, where would all of that go? So something is happening there, it's shifting or moving, but...
I think we got a grant coming for this, should the slip on Church Street.
Okay, I just was concerned when we talked earlier about the fees not being implemented.
Yeah, so I think that project got approved, it's pretty, slip on Church Street.
Talks about that.
What is the alarm user permit fee?
I believe it's twenty-five dollars and it's if anyone has an alarm in their business. And that money's supposed to be collected from the Nelsonville Police Department. And currently, I believe Nelsonville Fire Department is taking care of that. And it was, I don't...
It's not, I mean...
I think because, because of past administration.
Okay.
That was never enforced through PD. But I think the police department handles the alarm user.
Is that an annual or is it a one-time?
It's a one-time. So if you have an alarm in your business and it goes off, the police department checks on that, correct? So if they have an alarm, it's a one-time fee. Hey, I've got an alarm in my building, here's a twenty-five dollar permit fee stating that I have a, an alarm. And then the alarm, there's two of them, there's alarm user and... I'm sorry, I should have had that with me. Alarm user and it's also a business that puts alarms in, has to get a permit through the city.
It used to be if you accidentally set the alarm off in your own business, and I'm guessing, and that was collected by the police because they kept a record of that, they charged you a fee for coming
Yeah, I don't know.
to your business and, you know, sometimes, sometimes it was voided, other times depending, you know. I've heard them say, my gosh, we've been called there this year at least ten times. You know, somebody needs to show them what, all the new people who come in how to take the alarm off before they enter the building, so...
I also have to wonder, I mean, with all the advances in technology nowadays, like, you know, you could have an alarm that something triggers to go to your phone before it goes, you know, to nine-one-one. I'm sure it's not addressed to what we have. So I'm just wondering like if that makes sense anymore even? You know, if I'm going to open up a carryout and I've got a ring system and somebody triggers it, but I just go and turn it off and the police aren't alerted, I mean, I don't...
Well, what happens, what happens if it does get triggered? And it's going to come to you first and then somebody sets the carryout.
Yeah.
So I mean, you're cutting time down too though.
No, I, I agree, I just, I, that probably needs modernized.
For a twenty-five dollar one-time user fee, that's worth saving some of his life of getting police department there as quick as possible.
Well, I think that Chief Barber sent out letters last year to all the businesses about being an alarm user.
Okay.
And I think he only had one person respond to him.
Yeah, I've never got one.
Yeah.
So in the city of Logan, I have an alarm there also, you pay it yearly. And they give you three calls per year. And after that, it's ten dollars per occurrence.
False, per false alarms.
That seems to be a pretty good policy.
Now...
Well, I don't know if it's false or activated one, but if they show up, get three times for free or under your yearly fee. Then after the three, you pay ten dollars per visit.
Yeah, I don't like that because that's why you have an alarm system, that's why police are there to protect and serve. So if your alarm is set off, I get, I get the false alarm, you're allowed so many false alarms. But you don't know it's false until you actually get that. If it is a false alarm, then they charge you.
Yeah, I'm okay either way. If mine goes off, I want them there.
Oh, yeah, none of them.
So, and, and a lot of these fees can be utilized towards, if the police department has an alarm user, they could have that, that money could be appropriated for certain, you know, items in their department. It's like, you know, zoning permits that could be utilized for something, you know, in someone else's department. And I think that's what a lot of cities do is their permit fees and their fees paid for services and the city helped pay for, really. So, I mean, I think we overlook this stuff
Right.
because it's, it's something that no one wants, it's a lot, you know. But every business that has an alarm, the police department gets twenty dollars from that business and that could go towards a fund in their department, whether it be, you know, I don't know. I don't know what other cities are doing, but, I mean, it all makes sense to me.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think just kind of circling back to where we started, and I know we've talked about this before, it would also make sense for, you know, somebody to create like a new business welcome, like, section on the website so that as a business owner, I know that if I'm going to put an alarm in, I've got to pay it fine. I've got a permit fee, I've got to, you know, I've got to go here and do this. Like, it would be a very helpful resource and probably help to encourage some more compliance.
Well, we'd let them know also that they are required to contact the code enforcement officer in the city of Nelsonville and what your email address is, what your telephone number is, you know. Because a lot of times I've heard people say, I went to the library because I thought, well, they're a service organization and they can, and they are very nice there to tell people where to come and what to do. But we're just not being, communicating as we should be, as Sarah said earlier, so...
Yeah, it'd be nice for the business.
What's our Chamber of Commerce do?
Well, they do a lot of things Sarah can tell you. Sarah's very active in the chamber.
But aren't they supposed to have like a welcome pamphlet or something for the city or...
They do, but I think in terms of this kind of stuff, you know, you can't leave that up to the Chamber of Commerce to do.
Well, no, but they, they, you're great people. So you can give that to the chamber when people come and check in typically.
Yeah, it's another good touch point, but I, I would not want it to be part of their responsibility. I mean, I think, I think they're very different in terms of like, this is, this is the checklist of administrative things that has to happen for you to have a business. Whereas these are all your great resources and the warm fuzzy things is where I would think that would live with Chamber.
I do know that we do have some property owners of the square that sends their new business owners down here. And I've had multiple new business owners come down and I've filled them in on a lot of stuff. So it's nice that we have certain business owners and I would like to see all of them, that are landlords, send their tenants down and we can all get them started. Like, they have to have a fire inspection, you know. They come to me, I send them to the fire department so they can talk to Chief Barber on fire inspections. I send them to the auditor's office. Most of the time, they come here for the water bill to change the water bill into their name. So they start at the auditor's office and work their way down. But there's a lot of times that I'm out of the office.
Right.
Because I'm only one, I think we forget that I'm not a big department and if I'm out in the field, then I'm not here sitting at my desk. So if someone comes in, so a welcome packet would be very nice. I'm not sure what we would put in that welcome packet, but I think a welcome packet for new business owners and new residents would be nice.
I think we've definitely touched on a lot of important things tonight and the follow-up will include what some of the information is that we obtain as we go, keep going through this. and the follow-up will include what some of the information is that we obtain as we go, keep going through this. But I, I think it's important that our public understands, again, that these are not our ideas. They're things that Mrs. Barber has brought before us that are important for the operation of her office and other departments here in the city. And overall, I think everyone is striving to do the best they can. And if you have questions, you can always call the city, the city manager's office, which is seven five three thirteen fourteen. And there are voicemails that automatically come on for both the city manager and for Mrs. Barber. So just know that that's available. And if you need any other assistance while you're speaking with them, I'm sure they would help you. Just know that that's your starting point here with us. And we're happy that you're all here with us. And if you have positive comments, let us know and I guess the negative are going to come also.
So we don't have any questions, but we do have a comment. Tony Dunphy, the president of council, just wants to say thank you for all your hard work. And that's it as far as questions or comments. I would like to let the citizens know that we have the new system called Text My Gov. You text hi to seven four oh two six five three eight five eight to get started. And a series of texts will guide you through the reporting process. And it's the new Text My Gov app. We would love to see more people utilize that app. We're paying for it, you know, it's a clear understanding. If the pothole's been reported and hasn't been taken care of for two weeks, then we can look and see that, yes, the pothole was reported two weeks ago. This information all gets sent to the appropriate department head. So it no longer goes through me, it goes through Jason Cohen, which is our street supervisor, our utility supervisor. If you have a water issue, it goes to our water supervisor. If you've got a code issue, it goes directly to me. So it keeps all the middlemen out, it goes directly to me, as soon as you text it, I get it. So it's quick and easy. So again, it's seven four oh two six five three eight five eight. And that's Text My Gov, so you just text hi and you can send photos and all kinds of good stuff.
Becky, will you repeat that again, please?
Yes, it's seven four zero two six five three eight five eight. And you just text hi and then there'll be a series of, that'll prompt you, a series of texts that'll prompt you what to say next.
Can I take a minute to grandstand?
Sure, you may.
And so I also want to let the people out here know that we're going to start getting the neighborhood watch back going again. Myself, Johnny Flowers, and I believe Kurt Nunley. So we're going to get with the police chief and get that started back up here very soon. So I hope everybody will participate and thank you.
Okay, I, Simone, will you adjourn the meeting?
Well, will you have one, one piece of new business, it's very funny.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's just that our next regular scheduled meeting is on election day. And I know Betty Jo, you typically have a conflict, so.
Okay, well, I'm not working the election this year, but I don't think any of us want to be over here. And not this exciting night is going to take place, so. Do we want to move it by one night or do we want to move it by one week? If we move it by one week, we're in conflict, no, we wouldn't be in conflict with council because that's on a Tuesday.
One week is better for me.
Okay, good.
But then.
What's the date, Sarah?
A tenth.
We'll move it to November the tenth. And folks, that means that Thanksgiving is just around the corner and then Christmas. Now, I will take it above myself to adjourn this meeting, please. I so moved. Thank you.